Have to be, and so we're gonna go ahead and get all of their stuff mopped out first. Um, start with Workers' Comp Alliance. Um, is that alright, or do you want?
No, that's not.
Okay, I'm just going down the line.
Yeah, okay.
What we had where, um, the Workers' Comp Alliance is, uh, something that we are not a part of, but we could be a part of that. Did, would, you wanna explain it a little bit?
Do you remember, it was more the upper, um, my mind is all like.
I know.
I know, yeah, so it's, it's about, uh, workers' comp and it, it lowers our costs.
Yes, if they go to the in-network work, uh, if we're in this alliance and they go to a doctor, which our hospital and our doctors here in Scurry County are on that list. They go there, it lowers our comp, uh, our cost for that. We hadn't been participating in it, but it's gonna be a lower cost, so. And all of the doctors here are actively participating, they're signed up for it. So it's not like it's, they're gonna be in another network.
Right, and it lowers our, uh, workers' comp fees.
Yes.
That's great. Alright, all in favor? Alright, cybersecurity coverage, uh, discussing considering increasing cybersecurity security coverage from five hundred thousand to a million. Um, cybersecurity is one of those that we don't wanna get into, uh, as far as getting hit, uh, and hit hard. So, um, we were talking to our representative and, uh, there was one area that we checked the box, but we weren't, it wasn't accurate on the box when we checked it. And so, uh, it kept us at the half million, but, um, it's basically our, is our stuff saved in the cloud or is it saved on servers? And we are backed up in the cloud. And with that, we can go up to a million dollars on cyber security coverage. And it's not a big increase in cost.
Uh, about twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, difference from what we currently are paying now with a five hundred thousand this year. It is a separate insurance required by law to have. It was previously built into other insurances. Now it's separate required, and since we have had a couple incidents, we know like it, it doesn't take long before those costs start adding up really quickly. And we've been lucky with our incidents. Um, so a million really isn't, it's gonna, if something were to happen like Gaines County, it's gonna be a drop in the bucket, but it will be very helpful.
Those are my questions, that we increase our cybersecurity, uh, insurance from half a million to one billion dollars.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, I'm gonna hit the computer audit since you kinda have an idea of this as well while you're here. Um, so Windows eleven, oh, I'm sorry, Windows ten will no longer be supported after October. Um, we have a hundred, not quite a hundred and ninety computers. Eighty-eight of those are still Windows ten. So that could be an issue as we come along. We thought that Tyler was not, uh, compatible with, with, with Windows eleven, but we found out since that it is, it's been tested, and so far it's working.
So far.
Okay. Um, so, but they say that it's, it's compatible. So, um, we're gonna present a plan. This is really not, we're not really voting on this, it's just kind of information. We're gonna start looking at a plan on where we need to go, what it's gonna cost us, if it's gonna cost us anything to upgrade all of our computers to Windows eleven. I don't think all of them they'll, will be able to, um, because of their age. But, um, we tested that as well, upgrading to Windows eleven, and it wasn't any cost on that computer. So, uh, do you wanna speak to this at all?
We also were discussing putting into plan a, a play, into place a plan to, um, start updating computers, uh, because like I didn't realize how old the computers in my office were, and we've had ours, we got them all at the same time, and they're already older. They already have that older version of Windows, and I didn't think they were that old. So it's something that, as long as it's working, you don't think about it, you're just tracking along. When it doesn't work, then you're, you really need it. So we're gonna look at figuring out a plan to start re, kind of replacing those a little at a time and potentially putting those all under, um, Jeremy. The budget for those would go under Jeremy because he is the one who typically orders them and then gets them connected and all of that. And then that way, um, it wouldn't, wouldn't actually come out of each of your budgets. Now you then would not need to budget for that. So don't think, okay, well, I have this because I'm gonna buy that. That money is gonna come and we've gotta, it's gotta be pulled to, to be able to use that. It may be in the twenty-twenty-six process that we discussed with that more deeply, uh, or more thoroughly, but it's something that with us, with our offices going pretty much paperless, um, throughout this training, there's gonna be a lot of things that everybody, you're gonna have to be able to sign in. You're gonna have, your employees are gonna have to sign into the portals. So there's gonna be accesses and updates that are gonna need to be, uh, current on that. Uh, and unfortunately, it is a cost, but technology is, I mean, unless y'all wanna go back to paper and, and I'm not doing all of my accounting on pen and paper, so there's too many, uh, accounts.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it is very important.
Yeah, and it, it's similar to what we've done with copiers and, uh, phones and all of that, where it's not costing for each department, it's all under one area. And, uh, Jeremy will have the list and you'll contact him and let him know if you need a replaced computer coming up that year, or, or we'll kind of plan that as we go along, knowing what we have coming up following year, so that we can budget for those.
The other, sorry, one other thing, wrote my comment that is, um, we've also been talking about, um, a potentially a secured VPN or something to that sort. So that if a incident were to occur and we were have to set up at the emergency at the EOC Center over there visiting Jay, then we would be able to have our laptops to access for payroll invoices and stuff like that. So, um, there are certain things that we would definitely have to. No, no questions. We would definitely have to have, um, access to our, the cloud-based servers and our software and stuff like that.
And so can we get in the plan to update, upgrade our Microsoft Office accounts and licenses?
We, that's another one that we've been discussing.
Yeah, we're working on that. Um, there, there are some that won't need the upgrade, but there are some that are, and we understand that, and we're working, looking at a plan on figuring out who needs the upgrade. And so we'll, an email hadn't been sent out, but one will be sent out to see who does need the upgrade.
Okay.
To the, to the better Microsoft.
Jeremy's been talking with Tac for that, for the update on the Microsoft three sixty-five.
Any questions on, on that? It's just kind of more of an informational, what we're looking at, but about half our computers are outdated. So hoping it won't, won't cost as much to do that, but potentially it could.
Can wear outdated when you go on.
Then one other real quick thing is if you're saving stuff on your desktop, try to save it instead, I mean, you can save it on your desktop for quick access, but make sure to save it to your server, because then it's backed up in the cloud. If it's saved on your desktop, it's not backed up to the cloud. So try to save it into, if you have, if you know what your drive is, like I have two separate drives, Misty has two separate drives, that save it to your driver drive so that that's backed up to the cloud. And if something happens, we are able to, to recoup that. If it's on your desktop, we're not able to recoup it if your, if your computer crashes even.
Yeah, and that's something we're, we're working on as well. Okay, anything else on that? Okay, uh, treasures report and personnel report, questions on those?
Everything's looking good. I did send an email this morning about April twenty-third. We were told yesterday that we can, there will be nothing that we're allowed to put in. So that's why everyone have to have your time sheet, otherwise it will be delayed because we won't be able to really be in our old system and our new system, um, to post anything. So if they're not turned in, then it's gonna be until after the fifth that we're allowed to go in and post anything and enter and do everything, so.
So all time sheets?
All time sheets for twenty-third.
Uh, that morning?
Yes.
Early as possible, the twenty-third, no later, we, we have to.
I'm okay with the day before. So just, and we'll make corrections.
You wanna just call it April twenty-second?
Uh, I mean, we could, so. Yes, I mean, if you know, kind of, yes, that is fine, just so we have more time to, in case there are any hiccups in entering, that would be great.
Yeah, don't make motion for, for treasures, nothing, personnel report and the personnel report.
Okay, your second.
Second.
All in favor? Uh, certified revenue. I guess we could prove the auditor's report.
Oh, yes, let's do that.
Make motion to prove the auditor's February twenty-twenty-five monthly financial.
So, all in favor? And now we'll do certified revenue.
Okay, there are, I think, three, you have three on there, right?
I have two.
Two.
Um, which two do you have, cause I have my paper copies and?
EMS and TPW.
Okay, so this one's the next one then, alright. So we, uh, where's this one? This is the Texas Parks and Wildlife donations. Um, normally y'all would have already accepted donations, so that process will be done.
Let's, uh, yeah, that's another thing we need to discuss after the donations, while you're still here.
Alright, so there's two thousand dollars, um, that were valued, two thousand dollars in cash and checks that were donated, we're accepting that as certified revenue, and then there will be a budget amendment line placing that into, uh, an expense line. And then the other one is a supplement on the EMS twenty-two-four-three-fifty ambulance. Uh, they were able to get with some additional work or additional invoice that was submitted. So we got another five thousand-two-zero-three-twenty-nine received, and that is also gonna have a budget amendment placed into his vehicle expense line to pay for the records of that ambulance. And that incident was from last year.
Okay. You wanna do the other one?
No, this one, um, it'll be on the court for next time.
Okay.
Yeah, don't make motion to certify the revenues, and then some Texas Parks and Wildlife.
All in favor?
Your second.
Second.
Did I jump again?
I will look.
Alright, um, let's go over the, uh, funds for remaining projects at the Great Recreational Trails. I've given you each a sheet, and I wanna do this while Angel is here. Uh, I've given you a couple of sheets there. One is, um, the expenses, recreational trails expenses left. Um, the other one is the donations and what we're expecting on donations. On the expenses that are left, um, the chat, the Trailhead Kiosk, the maps, um, signs for pedestrians, that's working with the oil company, uh, to make people aware that they can't walk on the leash road and crossings for that. The brickwork, that's the entrance, uh, sign and the bricks going into, and then the entrance sign materials, um, trail markers, four by, four square tubing for the covers, two bike repair stations, and, uh, the crusher actually is, uh, we'll discuss that as well, and then some miscellaneous things. It's about forty thousand dollars, maybe a little bit more than that. Um, and then in comparison of where had, we've had roughly thirty-seven thousand donated, um, by individuals and by companies. And one of the biggest ones that's being donated is the hollowed-in crusher. Uh, that's fifteen thousand dollars. So, um, the crusher's gonna be ten to fifteen, actually using it to crush the, um, materials, the millings. Um, so as you know, the expenses between the time we got the grant and the time we actually started working went through the roof, um, some of these things were just not expected, uh, in the cost, they were in the cost, but, I mean, they were expected, but they weren't. Everything else was higher, and so some of these things are outside of that, especially the crusher. Didn't realize we would need the crusher for the millions. So I'm requesting, uh, that we use Fund Twenty-nine to cover these expenses. Uh, it's not taxpayer dollars, it's pilot payments and it's, um, permanent improvements, so, um, any thoughts?
Getting back up now.
Y'all too far.
Going too forward.
Yeah.
So is this one donated?
Yes, that's donated, yes, thirty-seven thousand, a hundred and forty dollars. And we're expecting this.
That's donation.
Yeah, that's expenses that we still have outside of donations.
So is a crusher donation just in one way or both ways?
That's both ways.
Okay. And then we talk about the expense of.
Yeah. ROE is gonna donate the hollowed-in crusher. And they had already donated, I hated to reach out to them, but they, he, it was not a big deal, so. When we put all the names on there, man, he might be, need to be a little bigger. So, any, any thoughts on that, Angel?
Um, we already have the bike trail set up in Fund Twenty-nine. That's where I've been capturing all of the stuff that's out of Fund Twenty-nine. Where we've placed the grant money has gone into Fund Ten, and then we do the budget amendment to place it into Twenty-nine. Um, and it is captured as an asset because it is, um, is permanent, like, I mean, so. We have excess, I mean, I was trying to, um, come here. The excess last year, funds over revenue was, um, four hundred and four, I mean, but revenue over expense, four hundred and four thousand was what was left that we received in and didn't expend out last year. That doesn't include funds that have been brought in this year. Remember, we have obligated some of those funds to the, to the EMS building. But, um, we do have that in there, so. What is the amount? I don't have that very.
It's about forty thousand.
Okay.
A little, around forty thousand. That's a, some of that is guestimation, some of it's gonna be not as high. Uh, the Trailhead Kiosk is, if you buy one, it's thirty-four hundred dollars. I think we can get the materials for about half that and sell it ourselves.
So, and then currently, I mean, we're at, we've received all of our, um, faded tax abatements, or we received them all last year, we, so then we will receive them all this year. Some of them are jumping up already, um, because they have already finished and they're starting to pay a higher amount, um, just to go ahead and, for whatever reason, get it going. Uh, so at, oh, at forty thousand, I'll really, it's an asset, and we've already started it.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
All in favor? Thank you. Was there anything else on the agenda we needed to cover while you were here?
I think just my, my stuff. That's payables and line items and.
Oh, yes, okay, so let's do line item transfer.
We have a few budget amendments. There is, uh, yes, there's three budget amendments. First one's precinct three and two fuel and oil, sixty-seven thousand, five hundred. This was a keying error, um, that we found when we were paying the bill. It showed it flagged it over budget and, um, fuel and oil, it said it only had seventy-five hundred dollars in there, and I was like, I don't think that's correct. Should've been seventy-five thousand, so this is to place the difference in that line. Uh, then the ARPA is to, um, clear, clean up some of those lines right now. Obviously, there's gonna be more coming because of getting the groundwork started on that. But total of fifteen thousand, seven sixty-eight twelve, um, in the administrative fees and capital outlay, starting on the MS building. And then the last one is the Texas Parks and Wildlife grant, to put in two thousand dollars of the, the money that was certified, put it into that line. And then line item transfer for the county attorney and two bonds and notaries out of main agreements, a hundred and seventy-seven dollars for a new, uh, employee notary. And then DA office, seven hundred and forty-four dollars, public officials liability insurance, out of equipment, to consider, they have a noted person on there and they had to increase their.
Those are my motion for a purple line of transfer and budget amendment.
All in favor? Council?
Council payables, one million, four hundred and twenty thousand, five sixty-four, forty-two.
Eighty miles.
All in favor? And no, we're not adjourned.
Really confusing, thank you.
Yeah, and so doing things backwards kinda threw me off on that. Um, we're gonna go ahead and move to, um, there's a lot of people hearing, some of them need to leave.
Would you move to seventeen?
Yes, seventeen, proclaim April Child Abuse Awareness Month, and then we'll go right into the, uh, number thirteen funding for the Child Advocacy Center. So, Samantha?
I'm right here. So we'll get those signed in, and thank you. Alright, so I'm Cindy Reyes, I'm with the Children's Advocacy Center. Um, so every year, we proclaim April as Child Abuse Awareness Month, and so that's what we're asking, um, every county that we serve to do. And so we've started off with Snyder first this year, um, and so I'll get that started. So whereas three hundred and thirty-nine thousand reports of child abuse are neglected were received at CACs in Texas in two thousand twenty-four, whereas over sixty thousand children receive critical services at CACs in Texas, and whereas child abuse prevention is a community responsibility and finding solutions depends on involvement among all people. Whereas effective child abuse intervention programs succeed because of partnerships among a variety of entities, including but not limited to schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, child protection services, prosecution agencies, medical professionals, mental health professionals, children's advocacy centers, and other community-based nonprofit organizations. And whereas everyone in the community should become more aware of child abuse prevention and consider helping parents raise their children in a safe nurturing environment as well as supporting local professionals dedicated to meeting the needs of child abuse victims. Therefore, this Scurry County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim the month of April two thousand twenty-five as child abuse, child abuse awareness month in Scurry County and urges all citizens to work together to reduce child abuse and neglect and to significantly improve the response of our community when child abuse occurs in the months and years ahead.
Thank you. This is something that you just, you, you don't know about until you hear the numbers, or you don't think about it until you hear the numbers and what's going on and you hear the court first lease. So I will make the motion to proclaim April as Child Abuse Awareness Month.
Sure.
All in favor? Thank you. Want a picture?
Sure.
Chad wants a picture. I don't bother at all.
I'm like whoever wanted a picture of that child protection team standing behind us.
Who'd you bring with you today?
Um, I brought Gretchen Maddox, she is my board president, and then Doug Dippold, who is my, um, board treasurer. And then I have Ashler, our DPS supervisor, and Lexie, who is our backward developer of children, um, with DPS, and then Nikki is my family advocate.
Okay, thank you all. Alright, one, two, and three. There you go. Alright, and there, there's a reason that they're all here, and, uh, we have such full courtroom with, uh, law enforcement, prosecutors, and advocates, really. Uh, and that's for the funding for the Child Advocacy Center. So, um, we'll get into number thirteen, funding for the Child Advocacy Center, discussing instead whether to support the Child Advocacy Center with additional funding. And I'll, I'll let you talk towards that from that end, and then the others and what they link to support means.
Okay, um, let's see what her ducks, that way I'm able to see. Um, so, as you know, we all serve five counties, and so that's Nolan, Fisher, Vigil, Scurry, and Boarded. And, um, we also help any out counties that don't have a center that is officially serving. And so, um, right now, we got three staff, and so we are this year than we've ever been. Um, I have some numbers that just show, I've been with the center about five years, and whenever I began working at the center, um, we might have one or two cases in Scurry County. Um, and so that was a low number per month. And so it was kinda a mission of mine, like, there's kids being missed, and we thought we'd get our agency out there, because before coming to the Children's Advocacy Center, I knew nothing about it. Um, so it was a mission of mine to get out the community and talk to people and let them know, like, this is happening and you have to be the voice for these kids. Um, and so here we are five years later, and Scurry County is our leading county of the five counties that we serve. Um, so that made a huge impact to where now we're seeing twenty to twenty-five kids per month, um, from Scurry County. And so with that being said, that means law enforcement, the district attorney, um, DPS, our mental health professionals, and our medical professionals, we are all coming together as a team to work hard to fight this in our community. And so, um, we've, we moved out to our new building at nineteen thirteen Seventh Street about a year and a half ago, and, um, it has been a huge, um, impact for us, because it's a little more private, we're out of everyone's vision and seeing what's going on with our families, because this is something that not everybody wants to talk about or see. Um, but it's something that we do with a passion and a love for our children and our community. Um, and so we have faced some funding issues, and so we were trying to figure out how can Scurry County come together to support our, um, office here, knowing that it is the leading county, and if we lose that county, that could mean kids are losing services, our law enforcement, our, um, district attorney, and things like that are gonna fall through the cracks again. And so then we'll see that number decrease again. Um, and so we just really are asking y'all to help with this mission, to be able to serve these kids. And so this just gives them, you know, time to be able to heal, um, and us just walk with them through the process of what this lies ahead for them day to day. Um, the center opened here in Snyder two thousand four, um, and we've grown from being the little office right next to the, um, this by Pope.
Is it Clip and K-9?
Yes, we're at Clip and K-9, so we used to be in that building, and then in two thousand nineteen, we moved over to the next building. And then in two thousand three, we moved over to, um, nineteen thirteen. And so we've grown and, um, we really just, we don't help supporting this. And, I mean, we don't wanna have to have anybody driving or taking off from their offices to come to our Sweetwater office, and so that's why we're asking for y'all to help with this funding and step up and support us in this mission that we're working on.
Thank you, Samantha. And so, uh, I asked, uh, knowing how, uh, important this is and wanting to know, uh, make sure that it's not just funding that's, or the funding is the only issue. I've asked the board to, uh, to come in and reassure us, first of all, that, that, that is the only issue that, uh, we're facing as far as closing this Snyder one. Uh, but I've asked others, uh, law enforcement and prosecutors to come in, and if y'all wanna speak to this at all, as how it would impact y'all, I appreciate it. What we're looking at is, is, uh, about thirty thousand dollars in funding split between the city and county, and I've discussed that with, uh, Eli as far as the funding, and that's something they're gonna look into as well.
What do you think?
It would come from four oh nine, we would create a separate line for that, and that's something that we would put in the budget in the future. But un, under four oh nine, there are funds that we could move to create that line for, for CAC funding.
I think it's very important to do that. I, it's amazing, uh, to me that you've been able to do as much as you have over the years, and I certainly believe that we ought to be, uh, behind you to make sure that our kids are taken care of.
Okay, alright, uh, all in favor? Alright, thank y'all. Appreciate everybody that came in, and I know y'all, y'all came from class to do this, and y'all interrupted you guys to come in. Thank you, everybody. Thank y'all for what you do for us, for our kids, we appreciate y'all. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Coach. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all.
Thank y'all. We appreciate y'all, everything you do.
We know where you're at now.
Let's go back to the top.
I'm just glad this wasn't a sting for me, I was getting nervous there for me.
I'm just glad this wasn't a sting for me. I was getting nervous there for a minute.
Oh, you're, you're on.
I was like, what did I do this time? What did I get caught doing?
Presentation and discussion of Department head committee and board reports. Did y'all want to go over your board report or your department head report at all or? Okay, let it stand themselves. They do speak for themselves. Y'all do a good job with those. Okay, very good. Alright. Approval of previous court minutes?
No, seriously, we're not that long.
That's, that's the one.
Like, we're simply referring the previous court minutes with corrections.
It's like, all in favor? Inter precinct project scheduling staffing?
One dirt to the airport.
Okay.
About fifty loads of it.
As much as they can take. Right.
Impact areas. He didn't notice. We'll send you a dope truck tomorrow.
However, we can help, right?
There will be a demonstration of the asphalt zipper that we've gotten in this Thursday. It will start at nine AM if they get here on time. And we will be out at verse sixteen seventy three and Kent Springs Road intersect. A bit close in pound, closer than what we're really gonna go with it. For everybody to be able to come out and look at it if you want to do that. There are going to be some modifications to it. We want to be able to put enough moisture into the base as we're milling to actually work it. We're gonna have to make two runs because it's a six foot wide drum. We'll have to make at least two runs to be able to use our motor grater to actually work material. And so we're gonna try to get, fix it to where in, in asphalt zipper is said that they will furnish that attachment to it. And so as we're milling it, we will put the water into it and be able to work it and make it a better machine.
How much water, how much water does it attach to?
That's the attack. We're gonna use our, we're gonna hook it up to our transport. The three hundred gallons is not gonna get it done. So we're gonna hook it up, fix it to where it will go either behind the front end loader, probably the transport to the zipper or we'll be going in front of it with the, with the transport. We're gonna figure it out.
Trails update. Trail builders are finishing up this week. They're watering today. That's another donation. We had, someone donated their trailer with a pump on it to spray water on areas that need water, those corners and jumps and all. That was Andy Weaver. So then gonna get started on all of these other things really quick. Those covers are gonna be built by Cooper Watley. He's gonna do that in the next week or two. The crusher will be here. He's gotta finish up a job middle of next week, end of next week. They're gonna haul it over here. Crush everything and then spoken with Eli the following week, we can get started on doing the perimeter. So two weeks, Monday, two weeks from yesterday. We'll meet some loaders out there to get that done.
Well, they're finishing up their project this week and we have next week.
And they're finishing up their project next week. The crusher, yeah. So they finished up one project, they moved fifteen miles. They're gonna finish up there and then they'll bring it over here.
What's the, our loader's already out there.
Okay.
We took it from the coast, the end out there.
Yeah. Right. That's one thing that about it. He was gonna have to haul the crusher and the loader. And you had told me your loader was out there. And so I wanted to talk to you about that and see if your loader would work. And I'll talk to him about using your guy and your loader to load up the crusher. Maybe he'll still have somebody out there loading the crusher.
Are we doing it like the golf course where we load the, Eli's machine or tire loaders?
Yes. And so there'll be, Eli and I talked about it, two to three inches thick, except where the lease road crosses. Make that a thicker areas for the equipment they bring in out there so they don't destroy that. Yes, sir.
So how many loaders do you want?
Dad, I'm gonna let you discuss with Eli. I don't know.
It's gonna take all of them, things it is.
Well, you gotta take one for the crusher and you gotta have one to move the machine.
Well, you're gonna be tucking that metal from there to his machine and then it gets pretty far out.
Yeah, and they, so in the materials that are there, building it up, building up the different corners and all, they have cuts and tracks that are still shortcuts across there. So in different areas. Let's see if they don't have, no, start getting other stuff done. Anything else? We did not accept donations. So let's accept donations to the library, the recreational trails, the senior center.
Like, we should accept donations as presented.
All in favor? Oh, fine. Bids. Let's do bids. Y'all open bids. And then we'll come back to the Sheriff's Commissioner's Board. Sheriff's Office? Oh, resolution for sheriff, sheriff, or multi-use agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation allowing installation and operation of automated license plate recognition cameras in Texas Department of Transportation right of ways. So those are those license plate readers. Right, okay. Yes, sir. License plate recognition resolution. Is there a second? All in favor? Automated license plate recognition resolution. All in, is there a second? All in favor? You want mine?
No, I didn't, oh, okay, I got it. What it is? For the chairs, this is for the chairs. What's going on with yours?
Let's start with the chairs. Did anybody else get a bid for the chairs?
We've got one bid for fifty dollars.
The remaining, is that for all the remaining chairs or is it?
Only three.
The two? I didn't, I didn't, that was a name. All three or whatever, whatever we need to do because.
Okay. I'd say for all of them. My motion, we accept it for the remaining chairs for fifty dollars.
Later.
All of it. Let's do the seal coating. Who's got the seal coating?
Not me. Didn't get one.
Is that what that is?
Yeah, that would probably be that one. Wow. It's been a day, guys, already. This is from Haring Services, bid of four fifty four per square yard. Wanna accept that bid or? No.
My motion with the two.
All in favor? Great. Bids for two thousand sixty Chevy high top type two ambulance and a two thousand seven Chevy Tahoe. Let's do the ambulance first.
I got one for.
Chevy Tahoe there.
Amaz Network Incorporated for ninety five hundred dollars.
Ninety five hundred dollars. I've got one for twenty five hundred dollars.
I've got one for three thousand for the ambulance only.
I make a motion, accept the Amaz Network Incorporated for ninety five hundred.
All in favor? Okay, and the bids for the two thousand seven, two thousand Chevy Tahoe? Do y'all have a bid for that?
Oh.
You dumped? We got two bids here, one for twenty five hundred and one dollars and one for twenty five hundred dollars.
I make a motion.
Price for one dollar.
Shane Carey won the bid for twenty five hundred. All in favor? Twenty five hundred and one dollars Shane Carey won the bid. Congratulations.
At least he knows what's wrong with it.
Can I ask what you're gonna do with it?
I'm gonna drive it. You say my daily driver to quit, I guess. Till I get my dollar out of it.
I made the talk to you, Tor, you believe?
Yes, sir.
Uh-oh, sound like trouble. Alright, disaster reimbursement policy facilities MOUs. If you remember our last meeting, we discussed covering the cost of damages to facilities if we have a disaster. City's looking at putting this policy into theirs as well and it's an attachment to the MOU. And in the MOU, it includes that in there. So Jay, do you want to speak to it at all?
We've never had a policy, a reimbursement policy. Y'all reviewed it last time and we made the changes. We put in there where the city and county will split the cost fifty fifty. Doesn't run just on one jurisdiction. If we have to have any of these facilities for anything, it's our obligation to make the payment upfront and then funding becomes available, then we will apply to have those cost reimbursement is what this is. Will be used for anything at the schools, churches, anywhere that we need a facility use, mills, anything like that.
So what's the, for the payment?
Just whatever the damages are.
Whatever the damages it is. They'll have to get three reasonable bids. Has to be reasonable pricing. Talks about reasonable wear and tear. You know, you will have reasonable wear and tear. They have to have documentation of everything as well as us. Documentation's a big deal of what I do. So I haven't noticed.
County attorney has just looked, looked this over and has approved it.
That's, that's a rough thing to do if something happens and way up out of the building. Make me prove the, the city of Snyder, between the city of Snyder and Scurry County.
Disaster reimbursement policy. All in favor? Did I miss anything at all?
The you go find a camera for the Sheriff's Department?
That was text box.
Yeah.
No, I did miss something. Point Scurry County Historical Commission Board members. Alright, so as you know, we lost Drew Bullard and he was the chair of lots of things, including the Historical Commission. And I've been in contact with Ms. Bullard the last few days and she's finding stuff from different directions that he was working on and I don't know where he found the time for it. But we need a new, a new commission. And I've spoken to these folks that I'm about to name off and they're all agreeable to being on the Scurry County Historical Commission. They're excited. There's some things they want to do and looking to. The chair would be Ms. Jean Burns. The vice chair would be Vanessa Murray. And I don't know if there was a vice chair before, but I think we need to have a vice chair just because of the checking account, which needs to be taken care of also. Both of the people on the checking account are deceased now. So we need to figure out that process. Alenda Beth Tolan, Lori Roland, Melissa Rico, Jai Goble, Jerry Cochran, Eli Torres, Josh Tor, Josh Oregon, they're not, he's not a Torres, Misty Chapman and Libby Wiggins. And I would put eleven people on that board or on that commission. We are required to have, to do a report every year. The commission is required to legislate to do a report every year. That's not something I want to add on my plate, so I would appreciate a nomination for this Historical Commission too. No, sir, I can delegate it to somebody. Delegate it to somebody.
Oh, yeah, delegate.
Historical Commission Board as presented.
And also we, it is on us to appoint, on Commissioners Court to appoint the board. So just wanted to say that.
What a great group of people. Another one's empty. Let her try to check.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, all in favor? Alright, thank you all.
Do you have a review of the list that lists the same packet?
I guess so. Did I need a one?
I need a one.
Alright. Alright, we will now go into executive session. We make sure there's nothing else. And Amy?